And good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, April 12th, 2021 Crestwood School District Board of Education Study Session. Madam Secretary, I'd like to ask that you call, roll.
It's 5:43.
5:43, correct, thank you.
Mrs. Berry?
Yeah.
Sal Zayat?
Here.
There she is.
Mrs. Falaz? Absent today, right? Mrs. Falaz is absent. Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Myself, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mr. Seba?
Here.
Mr. Cherry of Aquorum?
No, I did not. Oh, okay, no, I did not. And my last check was first thing this morning, so, okay. All right, and I also see that we have here for our study session Dr. Lazar, representing our Human Resources Student Services Department, our district facilities manager, Scott Jacobs. So, thank you. Hello, Scott.
Good evening.
And we have our superintendent and our business manager, Mrs. Penny Morgan. All right, we are ready to begin. So with that, we will hold off for the Pledge of Allegiance until our regular board meeting, which is at 7:00 PM. And we will turn this over to Mrs. Morgan for a business update.
So there's just a couple of things that I wanted to go over. First of all, is the RFP process. The RFP, RFB, those are interchangeable because it's request for bid or request for proposal. So those are interchangeable. So sometimes I'll say RFP and sometimes I say RFB. So I apologize for that. What I wanted to do, because I know sometimes we do have some new members, so I want to make sure that the process is understood. What Dr. Masalim is handing out is actually a copy of the recent bleacher proposal that we just put out, the Bleacher Replacement Proposal for Crestwood High School. What happens is, is the document is actually originated by legal. So then every time we do a proposal, we change the scope of the work, the timelines, and all of those things. So in this example, under the anticipated timeline, the RFB was posted to the Michigan State Sigma Third Party website, which when you post that, then they publish it and send emails out to companies that are registered through them. We also then put the RFB on our website. Under our finance page, we have a bid page. So that's also attached to our website. So if for some reason a company is not registered with the state of Michigan, they can go to our website and pull down the same document. Okay? For this one specifically, we will be doing a walkthrough on April 15th that we've scheduled so the companies can come and look at the bleachers and measure and all of those things. Then we set a deadline for the companies to submit every inquiry. Those inquiries are then answered within two days of the submission. Then the bids are collected on a deadline date. This one is May 4th at 1:00. And they, we take sealed bids only, so bids cannot be emailed to us. And so then, once those bids are here, the companies are evaluated based on criteria. For one, making sure all of the requirements are met for the bid. All of the data is documented and submitted on time. Two, then we go by companies and different projects require different criteria. So with this criteria, we look at the timeline of the project, finishing, the cost, the fact that they can meet all of the guidelines that we want them to, and to make sure that they're a registered company that has references that we can check to make sure their work does fit our needs. Once that process is determined, then we do submit the the proposals to the board and with the administration recommendation for the boards to vote on. The proposals, the RFPs, are only for projects that are over $24,953, and that's the state bid threshold. Every year, that bid threshold goes up approximately 3%. I'm making an educated guess that next year it'll be above $25,000. However, that number hasn't come out yet. So that's the process that we will be doing for all of our bids of that aspect from here on out. And we've been on it since I've gotten here. I'm not sure what the process was before, but I wanted to make sure that the board members were aware of how we sent these things out. Are there any questions on the process?
So in regards to this, I'm sorry, Mrs. Morgan. So the legal works with you on this? Do they also work with the athletic? For example, this is an athletic issue. So they work with the athletic director and his?
They don't, they work with getting the basic format. It's just the basic format, and we make sure that every so often the basic format of the language meets the scopes and the requirements. Typically about every six months, once a year, we have them review it to make sure that nothing's changed in the requirements. And it's in order to protect us for the contracts.
Anyone else? Mo, I'm sorry, I gotta look at the screen, Mo. So any questions from Mo or Danielle?
None from me, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. Dr. Masalim, sorry.
It's okay, if I may add real quick. So one of the things that we have also added to the process is Mrs. Morgan, myself, and Mr. Jacobs all look at the bids as well. And we review the bids to, you know, we'll do an individual review. And then after that individual review, we'll then email each other who we think is the best for the project. And thus far, I think, Mr. Jacobs, we've all, we've unanimously decided, like the architects, I think all three of us decided on the same architects without even speaking to one another. So the good thing about, and then we discussed why we think those architects would be best. So, you know, we're really trying to get more people involved in this process so that whomever comes and is part of helping our district move forward, we really want people who are local first and foremost, but they have to also meet the requirements with the legalities. And their bids have to be in, you know, a range of other bids. So, you know, the three of us have really worked well together on this. And Mr. Jacobs now in his new role, him and his secretary, and I apologize, I don't remember her last name, Peggy Snyder, they've also now taken on the role of getting these bids filled out for specifically what they need. And Mike Schley and Gary have been doing the same thing for athletics. So it is a team process, and Penny ensures that everything is lined up, correct, before it's submitted. And then in Penny's office, they send the bid out. And like Penny mentioned, everyone that is registered on the state of Michigan website gets this bid sent to them. So if they're registered, they get the bid. So I, you know, one thing when people ask me, you know, how can I do some work in the district? I say, go to this website, make sure you're registered, make sure you have your licenser, your insurance, everything situated, and be prepared. And we've been going from there. So I do appreciate the work that Penny and Mr. Jacobs have done together in this process.
All right, thank you.
And just so you know, it doesn't always have to be the lowest bidder for the companies because if there's a reason why a company, let's just say, for example, we've done work with the company in the past and they've not done an acceptable job with us, we do not have to take that lowest bid again because we have past history with the company and we can prove different aspects. But we do have to stay within a competitive range. So if we have three companies and we really have not had any experience with other three, there has to be a significant reason why we would take a higher bid.
Okay. Mo?
Yeah, thank you for, thank you, Mr. Chair. Penny, thank you for saying that because that was something I was thinking about. So obviously, there's a process with a lot of bids is eliminating the lowest, the highest. Many companies do it differently from that perspective. I do have a question, though. When you guys are assessing what you feel comfortable with, what are we taking into consideration? Obviously, the cost is definitely, you know, it's going to be high up on the list, but are there a lot of union contractors bidding? Are we looking at that? Are we taking that into consideration? Obviously, with what we're looking to do in the future with some of the trades and everything else, we have to make sure that we're positioning all of this together. It's just my thought, so.
Correct. One of the, one of the forms or one of the pages, it's an Appendix A within the document, is a bidder information form. And on that bidder information form, it asks for your business structure, whether you're a small business, whether you're unionized. So we do take, whether you're a minority-owned business, so we do take those into consideration. And they are put on a spreadsheet so that we can identify that these are there. We do try to go not necessarily by price or cost, but we do try to be comparable. So if, let's say, two companies are within $1,000 or $2,000 on a project, or then we do check references, we try to find out as much about the companies as possible to see what's one's going to be the best fit for our work.
Perfect, thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Chair.
Nadia?
I guess what I would want to ask is, do we look to see who is giving us the most for our money? If it's that $2,000 difference, but this one is giving us more of the things that we're looking for, or a better quality or such, would that make a difference?
Yes, we do take into account the quality of the product which is being provided to us. It also sometimes have to meet specifications. So if we are looking for a certain product, then we list that item or that type of item comparable into there. So yes, we do look into the quality of the product as well.
And to add, we also do reference checks. So, you know, Ms. Morgan and myself, with the contacts we have across the state, if we see anyone on there that we know personally, we'll call them up, shoot them over an email. If it's somebody we don't know, we'll shoot them an email, and we get reference back from them. And I know Mr. Jacobs has been doing reference checks on them as well in terms of like talking to other organizations or companies that these individuals may have worked with. So what we can assure you is that no one's getting a bid from us that hasn't been reviewed extensively.
Reviewed or vetted?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions. Is it, no one else does?
Okay, so the next item that I'm going to go ahead and talk about was the Architecture RFB. We have two projects that we're looking at. So we decided, in order to make sure that those tasks are done in a timely manner, we would like to look at hiring two architects to tackle the two separate projects. We did put the architectural bid out. We had six companies that replied and submitted proposals. Of those six companies, two of them did not submit everything that was required. So therefore, we did not review them. It's my thought process and my logic that if they have not completed the application and everyone else has done their due diligence, then I'm sorry, but you're not going to be evaluated because you could not follow the RFP in the first place. So of those two architects, we looked at the years of service or the years within the company, the years they've been in business, the projects they've done throughout the communities. We called references, we've checked on different ideas regarding that. We did choose, and Dr. Masalim is correct, individually, Mr. Jacobs, myself, and Dr. Masalim reviewed the packets. And we both, all three of us chose the same two companies as our top two choices for pretty much the same reasons. So it kind of made the choices easier for us. So we will be bringing to the board tonight SiteLogic and Ayersman, Architecture Company. Do we want to talk about the projects or not quite yet?
I will. I do, actually, and I want to talk about the process, if that's okay. So I just want to reiterate the process and where we're at. So, as everyone knows, we've discussed in public meetings that, you know, I have, you know, our district has been in conversation with the city of Dearborn Heights to partner in the Berwin Center, to create a partnership between the Crestwood Schools as well as the city of Dearborn Heights, to create a center that is the Berwin Senior Center and Berwin Elementary School as a dual-project, dual-system. And through these conversations, in order for us to truly understand how we can serve our community and our seniors as well as our students, we have to bring an architect into the conversation early. And the process is that, once, you know, the city and us as a district identify individuals from the community to come together as a committee to review this dual project, the architect will be in every one of those meetings. Because then the architect at the end can come back with a actual design and proposal for the community and for the city and for our district so that everyone can see how this is a project, a partnership. With this, we're also, as everyone knows, we've discussed publicly, finalizing our agreement with Cherry Hill Baptist Church to go into partnership with them to expand our Great Readiness Start Program, GSRP, as well as have more meeting space for our district and our teachers. And in that as well, we are going to be putting a committee together, and the church will be putting a committee together, because again, this is a partnership. It's a dual process. In order to do so, we have to have an architect. So by bringing in the architects, we will be paying the architects for services rendered. Therefore, we will be paying them as our consultants to hear the brainstorming, to discuss, walk through the premises, and put together a plan that meets code, but also meets the needs of all partners. If everything goes well and we move forward, then we continue to pay the architects to see the process through. If we get to the point where we have everything, and for some reason, we're going to put a pause or we're going to hold off, then we pay the architects for services rendered. And then if we need to bring them back in, we would bring them back in at a later time. So we're paying the architects as our consultants to put together plans that are tangible as well as aesthetic to support, again, the community and our children.
Sue?
Doctor, do we plan on using the architects to help sell to the city our idea and thought process for Berwin? Has the city been on board about this? I know that Mayor Bazey has been very open about his wanting to work with districts and with the city and being one city and everything. And I wanted to see if you found that to be true to his word, that he wants to work with us on utilizing Berwin for both the city and the school district.
I do have to say yes.
Good.
Mr. Bazey, Mayor Bazey and I have been in conversation. And we are, he is working with city council as well as community members as we are to establish our first, hopefully, brainstorming session, our first committee meeting, now that we have architects available. So yes, the city is very open to the conversations and to the potential. And therefore, what the architects put together with our committees will be what we will be illustrating to the community, our goals, so to help us get everyone to understand that this is something that will benefit the entire city, our community seniors, as well as our students.
So he understands it's a joint effort, that the school district is willing to fund the bill basically to keep our seniors there and happy, as well as to utilize that space for our students.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there was something else, Doctor?
No, I just wanted to talk about how and why we brought the architects in early and the process and how we will be paying them for services rendered, not for future services.
Thank you. Thank you. That was something that you missed in the beginning. I did mention.
The last item that I want to talk about is our district-wide insurance plan. So approximately 10 years ago, Crestwood Schools went to self-funding insurance. Through that, we contracted with Gallagher Basset, Gallagher Insurance Company, in order to put out the bids, do all of those things, and act as our third-party consultant. A lot of districts utilize that because of the new laws and all the different things that go with insurance that we didn't used to have to deal with. So what you have, and you have a booklet that was shared in the Friday update. That was the presentation that Gallagher had provided to us this year when I sat down and with Mr. DiMarco to go through all of it. I wanted to touch base with you and basically let you know how our insurance plan works. We're self-funded, which means we do not pay Blue Cross Blue Shield a premium. We pay for the services that we utilize throughout the district. So when individuals go and they are treated, then we have to pay for those reimbursements. We do pay Blue Cross for the actual service, but in a lot of cases, you would pay a monthly premium, whereas we just pay for the actual service that we do. Okay? So for each person, and it's monthly, so our rates change on a monthly basis kind of, but overall, they've estimated through the years. We provide service legally, we have to provide services, insurance to employees who work 25 or more hours. That's part of the new ACA accommodations and Obamacare. So if the employees do not work 25 hours or more, they're not eligible for insurance through the district. So, and so they're not even offered insurance because they're not eligible. Anybody working 25 or more has the option to take it. Now, if they do not work full-time, 35 hours or more, then they would have to pay a prorated portion of that.
Okay, I'm sorry, repeat that again.
If they are not a full-time person and they want to take insurance, they would have to pay a portion of their insurance for that aspect. So let's say a person is .7, okay? Typically, we would cover the portion, but they would have to cover, we'd cover 70%, and they'd cover 30% of the premiums.
So, if I may, just to press it up. So let's say that there's an employee that's part-time, that's been here for 15 years, and they want the benefits. Would they be paying the same thing as a person that just started?
They would be paying more because they're only part-time, but it just depends on...
But they're both part-time, that's the question. The part-timer's been here for 15 years, the new person is starting. Would both people be paying the same amount?
Yes.
They would be?
Yes, they should be.
There's no old contract, new contract?
No, they should be. I mean, no, because all of the, they're all the same. Do you have examples of where it's different?
Or is there, maybe somebody has the different service? Would it be because one employee may have...
I mean, I just know that other districts do it differently. So I was just wondering if, you know, like if you start...
All of our, all of our unions have the same language for insurance. Other districts do not have the same insurance language in all the different unions. They have different coverage for different departments or different...
So all of them?
Yep, but all of our unions have the same insurance coverage.
Okay.
The only difference is in life insurance and the amount of the life insurance for some people, but that's it.
So if I can add to Justice Berry's question, maybe I'm hearing a different... So does a part-time employee and a full-time employee have the same amount that they have to pay?
No.
Okay.
The part-time employee would have to pay more than the full-time employee. The full-time employee has to pay their employee portion, whereas the part-time has to pay the employee portion plus whatever portion of the premium is prorated to their percentage that they're working.
Okay.
I have one quick question, if I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, under, what is this? Number two, where it talks about COVID. It says that the cost-sharing waivers extended to September 31st. Well, it should be 30th of 2021. My question is that Blue Crosses?
Yes.
Okay, so if the pandemic goes on, you expect that to change?
Yes.
Okay.
It first was, I want to say it was March of '21.
Okay.
And yeah, so they've extended it a couple times.
Thank you.
Mo? I'm sorry, Penny, there's one question. Mo?
Yep.
Yeah, just for the sake, for my own knowledge, Penny, please. So we're self-funded. We're paying Blue Cross to administer or facilitate the plan for us. And we pay them based on per usage or claim. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes. It also has a fee, but it's a minimal fee. And it's an administration fee, but it's minimal.
From an underwriting perspective or a claim approval perspective, what guidelines do they use? Are they setting those guidelines or is this something that we have helped to set based on how they approve or reject claims?
We originally, when we went through the process, we set the guidelines originally when we set up, but it is based off of a, not a basic plan, but it is based off of certain guidelines within the plans. And I will, let me look real quick because I want to say...
Aren't some of the guidelines set by the state?
Some of the guidelines are set by the state, but there's different options of Blue Cross Blue Shield coverage. So we set the deductible, we set the different things of that aspect.
Minimum guidelines, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I said minimum guidelines can be set, yeah, but we can exceed those, but yeah.
Correct. We actually have a better plan than most districts. And I say that because I've had a whole bunch of different plans throughout the years. So we do have a deductible, but it's based off of a percentage. So it's really quite good insurance.
Have we, have we ever in the last five years exhausted the total amount of self-funding on an annual basis, or?
And I'm going to get to that shortly because there's some...
Thank you.
Yep, there's some sheets on here. So just so everyone knows that our renewal for medical stop-loss dental is June of, June 1st of 2021. Our vision goes until August 1st of 2023. Our life insurance, long-term disability, go until July of 2021. That's when our renewal is. And then our flexible spending account is October 1st of 2021. So if you move into, unfortunately, these don't have page numbers, but the, it says the 2021 Year-to-Date Medical Prescription Budget Comparison Report.
What section?
It's about seven pages in.
On section one?
Under Budgeting Reports, Medical RXPPO.
We don't have a title. We just have sections 1, 2, 3, 4, and so on?
I think it's section 1.
Okay, so that part I'm in, about page 7?
It's past, it's three pages past the renewals dates.
I think it's 11 on the bottom.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. On the bottom left-hand corner.
Okay. Does everyone have that? Mo, Danielle? Okay, I see Mo says yeah, okay.
So when we, and this year is unusual because of COVID because a lot of services were shut down for the year. But this goes through December of '20. So you can see at the very end, the loss ratio, you want to be about 100%. So you can see in June, we were down at 81. July, we were up 131. So you can see how we fluctuate. So so far over, from July to June, we were at 104. Which, as we go through and we look at last year's 1920, we were at 83.7%. So really, we gained in that year. So going over this year is not costing the district an extreme amount of excess because we did save last year to this year. That's where our Internal Service Fund comes in, and we have that fund balance to offset the costs.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Nadia?
So if I may ask, what percentage would we be concerned?
If it got up to about 110%, a 10% fluctuate either way, then that's where you're concerned. And that's where you start looking at modifying your plan or making adjustments. And if you go back towards the back of the packets, and I'll tell you which pages they are. Page is 73. Moving forward, you can see the comparison from 1718 was at 90.8%. 1617 was at 96.7. So we've been right around between 90 and 100% for the past seven to 10 years. So every once in a while, when you get that 103, 104, it's not one of those things where you need to be concerned about because over the years, it's been fluctuating and we've been benefiting from the less than, than the 100. In addition, with those rates, we're able to keep our employee portion, because we're an 80/20 district, employee portion and the employee cost down lower than a lot of other districts. Currently, we pay for a full family, it's $77 by weekly, so $154 a month for our portion of the insurance, which when you look at the premiums that we have and when you look at the coverage that we have, other districts are, I know in my previous life, I was paying $300 a month, so for not as good of insurance. And as we go on, next year, if we look at the rates, and we're moving on to projectiles, we're projecting that the cost for the employee share for this year to be going down. So that's going to be a good thing for our employees. So instead of paying $77 every pay for full family, it's going to be approximately $90 a month, so approximately $50 every pay. But I don't have those numbers for the public quite yet or for other employees. I have to finish the calculations. But I don't have those numbers for the public quite yet or for other employees, I have to finish the calculations. But those fall onto page, sorry that I keep going back and forth, this was a lot of information. It falls on page 55. Where you can see that if we go with the Blue Cross Blue Shield monthly projections, it's approximately $96 versus, well, it's $96 a month for single and then 153 for full family. So, which reduces to what we were before, so that's a good thing.
Hey Penny, this is Mo, Mr. Garcia, I hope I can chime in.
Yes.
Uh, just, just for the sake of me not being an expert in insurance, so forgive me if I'm asking questions that are, so the negotiated pricing that's paid out is negotiated by Blue Cross for anything that may happen, right? They're running the gamut on the costs?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we do put out to bid, we do put it out to bid every year, every three years, we have to put it out to bid. And we did put it out to bid this year. Because the cost to the district was so much better than the other companies. Three companies in the area refused to bid. Mesa did bid on us, but it was 17% higher than what we were paying currently. So they couldn't compete with what we have, cost-wise for the district.
Perfect, thank you.
And so if you look on page 60, you'll see it's part of the marketing update and it's the PA 106 compliance. And where we've bid out medical, dental, and vision. So with Mesa, they were unable to match our self-funding because all of their plans are premium-based.
I think, did you have a question as well? Oh, Nadia?
I had a question. Um, are the employees allowed to carry dual insurance? Like from another, if the spouse, let's say, works for the big three, would they be able to carry that and ours, or do we just?
No, they are allowed to carry dual insurance.
They are allowed to?
I can safely say that they would, I mean, unless it's contractual that they're unable to. Yeah, unless they-
They do coordination of benefits.
No, go ahead.
I mean, I'm sure each company would ask, do you have?
Mm-hmm, but they do, they are allowed to carry, yeah, but it's coordination of benefits. But a lot of times, other companies, when they look at it outside, they pay more than we pay. So a lot of times, they go through our district versus outside companies.
And I, I think an employee has an option to opt out if they're offered an insurance from a provide, you know, from their company, if they work for the Fords and they could opt out. And I think at one time, some companies would pay you a stipend to opt out of using their insurance.
Correct.
On a yearly basis, correct, okay.
So if I may ask, I guess I want to point double the etiquette. If, what would the cost savings be if they weren't allowed to carry dual?
Excuse me, without having looked at all the data from the past several years, I don't have an answer. I can look into it, but I don't have that answer right now.
Is there an additional cost for that?
We would just cost, we cover what they actually use. So it's not necessarily additional cost. Um, it's actually a lower cost because their other insurance company is picking up some. And so we're not necessarily picking up as much as we would have in the first place.
Ms. Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what you were asking, I mean, is like a secondary-type insurance. I know that a lot of premium primary insurances won't allow that because then they start depending on each other to pick it up.
Correct.
But yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think Penny, that's, yeah, we should look into that. I, I don't know if that secondary-type insurance would be allowed. And if it is, there's going to be dependency on it and then you're going to have a lot of declines or projections.
I can look into it, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the insurance aspects of it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No one here at the table, Danielle, are you okay? Any questions?
I'm okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mo, was there anything else that you had?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that covers all of yours?
That is all of mine.
This was very lengthy to, you actually helped make it a little bit easier to understand, so. But I remember seeing this, what, was it a couple of years back? Something like that?
We get those every year and I think I gave it out last year.
We did.
But I don't think it was in the packet like that, I think I just emailed it out because again, it was in March of 2020. So it was right around COVID, the beginning of it.
All right, thank you.
In the irony of it is when Penny was going through with me, seeing how healthy we are in that area right now, and that's because of COVID. Because not many people are going to the doctor or something like that.
Right.
So, but, um, that's something that we're going to keep a very close eye on next year, see how that rolls out. And then, as you remember from when our auditors presented the audit, they stated how we have even higher healthy, we have a healthier than other districts when it comes to that balance there. So we're going to keep a very close eye on that and try to keep that balance as high as possible. For God forbid, if there's ever any need for that, because we're self-insured.
Gotcha, okay, sounds good. All right, well, that takes care of business updates. And now we will have our human resources updates, which are going to be from Dr. Lazar.
Uh, Ed, I just wanted to let you know, I ended up picking it in, I ran late, but was able to get in.
All right, thank you, note that for the record at the time of 6:19. All right, Dr. Lazar?
I don't have anything for the study session agenda today.
Oh, okay, we haven't listed, but it's always nice to see you.
Always nice to see you.
Thank you, thank you, all right. Okay, with that, we're going to move right into the superintendent. Any updates that need to come forward to the board?
Um, at this point, no, I just like the board to know and the community to be aware. And something that I will also mention in my superintendent's message, we're keeping a very close eye on the COVID cases in the area. Everyone is well-aware that Michigan has some of the highest rates right now. Um, and I just want to update the board that the testing for this week is something that was out of our control and is something that is controlled by the federal government. Um, and I know the state was petitioning the federal government previously to vacate all assessments this year and the state, the federal government replied and said no. So basically, uh, the, I guess, the compromise the federal government made is that they're waiving all accountability. So therefore, that is why our high school and middle school have already, have sent out messages to parents that are eligible for testing, that is an option, because it has to be in-person in the school. So that is this week, we're taking all precautionary measures. I do want to say of all those that are, that have the option to assess this week, we're at about a 20 to 30% rate of students who will be taking the assessment. And in, and to ensure that we are socially distancing, we really are spreading them out throughout the entire building where there may be three to five kids in a classroom at a time. So we're, we're doing that, we want to thank everybody's patience during this. It is going to lead to more asynchronous instruction this week, so we do apologize for that. And just as another update, the M-Step, which is our elementary through grade, oh, and by the way, eighth grade also has the PSAT and that's this week as well. Um, M-Step, which is grade three through eight, is going to be coming up in the next month or so. There'll be more information to come. Again, uh, parents will have the option, uh, if it has to be face-to-face. There was talk that Michigan was going to try to get the M-Step to be online. So if it is virtual, then everyone will take it, just they'll take it online. But again, um, I want everyone to know that we are not stressing out over this. Uh, we are given it because we are mandated to and we are doing everything in our power to make it as safe as possible. But we are continuously keeping an eye on the numbers and everything that is happening in our area.
Yeah, the numbers are alarming as it not only comes out statewide, but also nationally. So I would just, again, I know you've mentioned it and I think several other board members have mentioned it. And just for those that are watching us and, or hearing us or seeing us, whichever it may be, uh, just to be very cautious and, you know, when you are out and about, so make sure you wear your masks and watch the gatherings and be cautious of who is entering and exiting your home and so on and so forth. So that's the only thing that we can do. And I believe Dan, our trustee Danielle, uh, through her organization, or the organization she's aware of or represents with, was going to be offering the COVID shots for those 16 and above. And I don't know if Danielle, you want to comment on that or if you want to wait for the, the actual board meeting?
Um, I can do it now too, that's okay.
Okay.
We're offering COVID-19 Pfizer shots because Pfizer has been approved for ages 16 and older. Uh, there is a link that, um, I think Kristen, actually, if you got, or David, if you guys can put that link on the school webpage, maybe? And the link takes you to a registration form. You can register whoever you want to take the vaccine. Uh, ages 16 and 17 must be accompanied by a legal guardian or parent. And that's for this Thursday, um, at the Islamic Institute of America on Ford Road. And, um, from 12 to 3 PM.
Thank you, yes, yes, Nadia?
Ford Road, that's the one that's close to, I want to say John Bailey, correct?
Yes, right across the, uh, right across the-
From the Hite Shopping Center, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Danielle.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I just want, I just want to formally thank the Amity Foundation. I know this is the second such vaccination that they've, they've been a part of. First was at Riverside and now this. And I, I know Danielle and her, and her spouse Imad are, have done so much for this community. I just wanted to thank them publicly because people should know all the great work that they are doing. Not just in Dearborn Heights and the Crestwood School District, but in this entire county, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sabah, much appreciated.
Are there any, are there any questions from any members of the board for administration?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, just one second.
Um, I was reading, thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Jacobs, for attending this meeting. Um, I was reading about the cement over by the high school entrance. Where are we with that? Are they replacing it, are they not? Um, I mean, thank God that you caught it, uh, but what is happening with it, where are we?
Um, good evening, I'm currently chasing the permitting, the, I had, I had, uh, the entity send me the, all the proper C of Os and permitting. And the permit that they sent us did not include frost-free pores. I went to the city today to try to pull the permits on regards from our, our inspection, from our local city municipality. Um, and needless to say, they were very busy and they didn't have much time, so I'm going to circle back. But from what I'm reading in the permitting, there was no frost-free pores inspected nor mentioned in the permit, which means the slabs that are adjacent to the building would have to be frost-free because they're within a five-foot radius of the building edge. Um, and these slabs certainly did not meet that criteria if they sank or heaved. Um, at this time, I was told that the heaving will not be covered under warranty. So that's why I'm approaching it as a, as a builder contractor. Uh, because I believe the, the permitting did not inspect that cement, period. Uh, if they did, they would have mentioned it was a frost-free pore and prep for such.
So with that, have we, who was the company?
It's, uh, the companies we dealt with during the bond.
So who would be responsible?
Uh, we're, we're working on that currently.
Have we paid our-
The company that completed the work was paid in full.
Okay.
Because it was not one of the three major contractors, it was a different contractor. Um, it was a second company, so they have been paid in full.
Well, at least thank God that he caught it and we can probably try to get something out of it.
If I'm reading this correctly, it's, it's an issue, and Scott, help me if I'm, just so I can understand. This is an issue in regards to the permits and whether or not the property or, I'm sorry, the job was inspected correctly after the pore, correct?
Uh, that's correct. In fact, if I may, just take two minutes of your time. The permitting that they sent me, it states, "The saw-cut demo remove walk between the concrete approach off beach daily and all asphalt parking lot to include bus loop at Crestwood High School, South Lot. New walk installed six foot width, 4,000 PSI concrete, 400 square feet total." Well, that, if that was the case, then they didn't, they didn't inspect or, or notify the state official because there's over 400 feet of cement adjacent to the building that's in question right now. So, uh, that's why I believe I do have something substantial here. And once, once I can meet with somebody from the city, because ultimately, our, our city municipality also had to sign off on the rough forms uh, for the cement to make sure it was prepped properly. Um, so that, that I'm navigating currently.
Okay, so is there-
Over by the pool, you said, in the report, right, by the entrance, that's what I read?
That is correct, yes. And the permitting that they sent me does not mention anything of, of that area.
Okay, all right.
It's all right here.
Okay, well, and I know they're in a transition period over there with the new director, so hopefully you'll be able to get your answers quickly.
I hope so too, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
All right, anything else, Adam?
That's it, I just wanted to make sure that we were following up on that.
Thank you.
That it sounds like a large amount of money.
Yeah. Oh, I, I know what I, can I piggyback off that? Is that also a project that's inspected by the state? Or just by the city?
I know, the state had given a C of O, however, they don't monitor the, the procedures of the permitting. They just come to see if it's been finalized and it meets state's requirement. They don't, they don't investigate other than that, thank you.
All right, Salwa, you had a question?
Yes, um, so with the Michigan numbers where they're at, is there any risk? Do we have to revisit the re-integr, the integration plan or any risk to hybrid children? Or everything can stay status quo or do we anticipate a change?
Well, I would say as of now, the good, the, the, the best thing about the plan that we have as a district is that we gave people options. And families who chose the option to attend the hybrid instead of just virtual, it's not going to create a problem if they choose to go virtual um, because of the way we have it set up. So we gave ourselves a lot of flexibility. Um, what I would recommend and, um, is that through this week, because we're still on a pause this week, which I thank the board for doing, because we're still on a pause this week, it's going to give us a few more days to see how the numbers go. And if the numbers continue to rise, you know, I think that as an administration team and as a board of education, we, you know, can have further conversation if we want to possibly extend the pause or, um, or, you know, change a few things up. But again, because of our plan and the flexibility our plan gives us, we won't have to make any drastic changes to what we're doing. I hope that, does that answer your question, Trustee Fuwaz?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just, if we are going to make a decision like that, I don't want us to make it on a Friday.
I agree.
I think that, um, we need to give parents ample time to prepare. Um, if they have childcare that they need to take care of. I just don't want us to do, you know, what others have done where Friday, guess what, you're, you're not coming in on Monday.
But I agree, I agree, and I'd just like to see the numbers the next couple of days.
Yeah. To see how things- First to close, you know, we've just been asked, you know, to make sure that we curtail some of the things that we've been doing, which have been done. But, yeah, did it just come out today?
Yeah, it just came out.
I didn't get-
Just in that Michigan-
Oh, fuck, oh, okay, then I did not get that.
And I will say that the superintendents in the Wayne County area, you know, we, we're constantly emailing one another and having conversations.
Okay, so, I mean, we'll do, okay, so this just came out then?
Okay.
This is something-
Okay.
Mr. President?
And that's, uh, Danielle, let me just make sure, did you? Oh, Danielle, you'll be next, Asia?
So we, we already, technically, it was asked if we go on a two-week pause. We had already had that planned and we were already on a two-week pause, which is giving our families that opportunity to kind of see how their, you know, how their families feeling from after spring break. Um, how many kids do- How many kids do, I know our elementary schools have more students in the classrooms. Our middle school and high school classrooms don't even have many kids in their classrooms. I mean, you're talking five or six students and some, some less, so I think personally, I mean, if, if that change were to happen, I almost think that maybe our elementary schools go to the four days and split those classrooms as opposed to, I'm not saying not shut down if things were to progress and get worse, I'm just saying there might be other options, because I don't feel like our middle school and high schoolers need more space. I feel like they're already spaced out, there aren't many kids. What, we have like a little over two hundred kids at the high school?
So every one of our classrooms, so middle school, you're looking, we're at approximately thirty-two percent. High school, we're at twenty percent.
Yeah.
Elementary, yes, we are at forty to fifty percent. But the way it's all scheduled right now in elementary is there is space, like it was planned out. And there are, so, for example, when we go back, remember, some of the questions were posed. Well, we have such a little number of students in the elementary, why don't we have them come four days? And we had agreed that, no, we're going to keep it at two, because then we can maintain the social distancing, and it's safe. The, and then there are a couple of classrooms where there were so many kids that came back that we had to spread those kids out over four days. So we have the social distancing in place, we have everything in place. But the question's going to come down to if the numbers continue to rise, do we continue doing what we're doing, do we, you know, different things? And I don't want to speak, you know, more, because I think trustee Alzayah had raised a question.
There was something I was going to comment on regarding that, but I will wait. Danielle, did you want to chime in on?
Yeah, I just want you guys to, I mean, I've been watching the numbers very closely. I'm sure you guys all know I'm intimately involved with what goes on on the other end.
And we thank you very much for helping people in keeping us on top of it all.
Yeah, so I actually tossed around a few ideas of, you know, reaching out to you guys and discussing shutdown or possible extension. I think at this point, as of today, we are good. And I don't see anything by the end of the week changing. However, I would suggest that we, as a board, I know that we were meeting monthly to talk about extending, pulling back, opening, closing. I think that maybe we might want to reevaluate every two weeks and, or weekly at this point. But I, I mean, I'll leave that decision up to you guys. But for, for today, for this week, I, I think we're good to stay open. Meaning to stay on track of our reopening of Monday.
Of Monday, okay, I got you, I follow. Also, and I don't mean to cut you off, Najah, we only have, what's, four, five, six? Less than seven, almost eight weeks left?
So, yeah, so when you look at the calendar, so our students will be coming back on the nineteenth. And that's when secondary will also be coming back as well.
Right.
So for our seniors, it's one, two, three, four, five, six weeks for our seniors. And then for the rest of the school, you're looking at nine, almost ten weeks.
Oh, that many?
Yeah.
Oh.
And that, that's, but, but that's not counting the three days off for a holiday, and that's not counting Memorial Day weekend.
Right.
So that's just counting those in there.
Okay.
So if you take those days off, then you minus a week. So, I mean, it's, it's right around the corner.
Yeah.
And I know, like, right now, the high school is preparing, you know, for a graduation commencement.
That's right.
They're preparing for honors night, so we're, we're preparing for all that.
Right.
So it's, it is right around the corner, so that is also something to keep in mind. And I really believe that's why in our high school, we only had twenty percent of the students who wanted to come back.
Who'd come back, yeah, chose to come back. Najah?
Yeah, no, I'm, I guess kind of going back to what I said with our numbers and stuff like that, is how many kids we have in the building, and then with people having the option, if they don't feel comfortable staying, you know, virtual.
We're, that's the thing, too, come Monday, we'll see what our numbers are in the school, like how many kids we actually have coming in, and we'll keep very close track of that. And it's, it's, it's literally going to be, you know, us daily updating the board on what we're seeing and what's happening.
Yeah, if we don't have to stick...
Mr. President?
If we don't, I mean, we can always have an emergency meeting if needed, if we have to.
Danielle?
Yep, so something, something I want everyone to just keep in mind, it, it's the new variant that's causing all this trouble.
Right.
The new variant is spreading very, very fast. It spreads ten times faster than the regular, you know, COVID-19 strain that we've seen since beginning of March of 2020. So normally, it'll take a variant or a virus sixty days to run through a community. One of the first cases that we've seen in southeast Michigan of the new variant dates back to about March twenty-third, March twenty-fifth, somewhere around there. So we're almost at that thirty-day mark. It's probably going to cause us a little bit of trouble for the next few weeks. But like I said, I've been watching the numbers really closely. And even though the, even though it's, it, the numbers are rising, the cases of the positivity cases are rising, we still look okay.
Okay. All right. And I, and I think right now, the biggest fear that they're having right now is just that it's affecting those, what, thirty and down, correct, Danielle? Thirty and down has been where the numbers have been the, at the dangerous high.
Correct, because it, so it spreads ten times faster, meaning that the fifteen-minute rule, if you're in the same room with somebody for fifteen minutes, it's probably not going to take fifteen minutes, it's probably only going to take a minute. You know, the mask is good, but it, it's not as foolproof as it is with the regular strain. So this variant is causing a lot of trouble across the board. But, I mean, thankfully, we've been able to do good, and I think it's because we took very stringent measur, measures to begin with, with opening. A lot of districts had their spring break and opened the next day.
Next day, right.
You know, and, you know, we, we were very stringent, we were really good in making that two-week mark. So we're not even opening until next Monday.
Right, I, I think, I think, and not to take away from Najah, that you, you wanted to say something, but that's credit to the administration and working with the union and all the other professionals within the district and saying, oh, what can we do to ensure not only the safety of our staff, but most importantly, the students coming back? Let's, let's ensure that when they do come back, it's going to be in a, in a safe environment, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think collectively, we all work together, but yes, definitely, thank you to the administration. Nope.
Yeah.
I don't know, Mary?
I have, Sue?
Doctor, have we suspended sports as the governor suggested, although it's not mandated for right now?
No, actually, we have not. The only thing that we have put a pause on is weight training. But we have not put a pause on spring sports, because all spring sports are outside.
Okay.
And our athletes are being tested weekly.
Okay.
And, yes, and just as an, as an update, too, just because in the fall, we continue with sports, and we're continuing with the same procedure and process. So Mr. Schley has been doing a very good job of ensuring that our students are tested and following up, and I don't want to say anything positive, because I don't want to jinx anything.
I don't know where it came from, but great. And, and Mr. Schley works very closely with Dr. Lazar.
Yes.
She's been very helpful in providing that information to the board of what's been going on, so, yeah.
Dr. Lazar is sick and tired of hearing about COVID, I can just tell you that.
Uh, yeah, I can imagine. I think, I think we are, okay.
You know, the scary thing is the hospitals are at ninety-plus percent.
Oh.
And it's, it's really bad, because unlike earlier during the COVID pandemic, the staff were not as tired as they are now, and so you're not seeing people volunteer for overtime. And the ones that are working are really exhausted, so it's, the numbers continue in the hospitals to rise.
All right. Well, what is our time, Madam Secretary? Six, six forty-two. If I have no other questions from any members of the board, and I don't see anyone from the audience that is seated out there raising their hands, what I will ask is that we adjourn for the next fifteen minutes, so that we can go ahead and use the facilities, stretch our legs a little bit, and then when we will come back and prepare for our seven o'clock meeting.
So moved.
Okay, so I have support from Sue, do I have, I'm sorry, emotional, too. And I have support from Nadia, that we go into recess at, no, I'm sorry, we will end.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, and, yes.
Mr. Garcia, did you say come back in fifteen minutes? I'm sorry, you broke up.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, so we can begin. And trustee, oh, I'm sorry, Nad, Nad is going to take role.
Mrs. Alzayat?
Yes. Here, yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
yourself, Iskaminsky?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we are, thank you.